Come to order, please. Is the mics on? Okay, very well. Well, I want to welcome everybody to this regular scheduled board meeting of October the fifteenth. It's actually the continuation of October the ninth meeting. Due to the hurricane, we had to take some additional steps to make sure we protected everybody and still be able to get the board in session. I'm going to ask everybody to stand for the invocation and then the pledge of allegiance.
I probably were grateful for today and for this time you've given us to be together. God, as we look to our east, we don't even know how to say thank you for sparing us from such tragedy. While at the same time, Father, we lift those up that have been so negatively impacted by the storm. We just pray that you'll provide all the needs, or help us to supplement where we can and do what we can to assist and make their life a little better at this time. So, God, just pray your hand be upon them. We ask you to join us now in this time for this meeting that will say and do things that are pleasing to you in the name of prayer. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, I don't see any other elected officials unless they're in the hall. So, that being the case, we'll call the meeting to order. We've got some additions and deletions from Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As we get started, I would just say to be thankful to our emergency management folks and all those that man positions up at the bunker over the last many days and trying time. Very fortunate that this is going fast to us to the east. However, it certainly impacted a lot of those we love and know very well. We tell the board we are reaching out to those counties to provide whatever assistance we can. So, it's a tough time for them, but our folks did a great job. This area again kept everyone as fed as you possibly could want. So, it's always appreciated. But there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that most folks don't see. So, just tell them thank you when you see them. Recognize that. Other additions? Under the TDC, we have an update in the...
Sorry, sorry. That's a beautiful comment.
Oh, okay. An update and request direction regarding the beach code revision recommendations. That'll be addition number one. Then, under planning is a request to appoint Jack Huggins Jr. to serve in the MR position and David Henderson to serve as the district one appointee on the zoning board of adjustments. So, those will be coming for you under those two areas.
Okay.
And Sid has.
Yeah, sorry. Commissioners, I would ask that we delete item number five on the consent agenda and item number twenty-five under my name. I'll bring those items back to you at a later meeting. And then, I'd also ask that we, whenever we get to it under my name, consider rescheduling the Freeport Business Park Owners Association meeting. So, that'll be an addition.
And I'll mention this, and if you want to add to the agenda to vote on, but we need to have a brief discussion and we'll do it at the beginning of my time regarding what perceived emergency and how we want to proceed with it.
Motion to approve with additions and deletions.
And go second. Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve. Motion carries. Okay. At this stage, before we get too far into the agenda, Megan wanted to have a brief comment. Time, come forward, Megan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Megan Harrison, CEO of the Walton Area Chamber of Commerce. I had the distinct pleasure of working alongside our emergency management team this week at the bunker in Defuniac during the activation in the ESF eighteen business and industry post. Since we have gone back to a level three at Walton County Emergency Management, I've been able to continue to locate resources within Walton County and some of our region to help locate distributions that are coming in. And so, a couple of things, I just wanted you all to be aware of the incredible support that we are getting throughout the region. We're having state calls daily for ESF eighteen business and industry. It's, we've received over about nineteen tons of water at Grayton Beer Company's warehouse. We're deploying that into Jackson, Calhoun, Washington, Bay, Gulf, Franklin, Liberty, I mean, pretty much all of the Florida counties who were very heavily impacted. And so, Jeff and his team have done an incredible job. And I just, on behalf of the business community from the chamber standpoint, I know you guys know, but I just wanted you to know for one, how blessed we are to have the team that we have in place doing the things that we're doing. So, very grateful for that. And then, just also, Commissioner Anderson asked if there were any needs specifically that we still have. VolunteerFlorida.org is where folks can register to either be a volunteer or they can make potential contributions. All the contributions received through VolunteerFlorida.org are going specifically to Michael relief efforts. It's pretty awesome to hear some of the dollars that are coming in from some of the large corporations, not only throughout Florida, right here in our community and all throughout the U.S. And so, that's one way. Another way is, we do still have our three donation locations in Walton County, at the Matrix in Defuniac. What's the... Southern Toys Properties in Defuniac, and then either the Walton Chamber office, or if it's a large donation, we've got some other satellite locations that we're sending that stuff to. So, feel free to continue to point anyone in our direction. We're happy to assist. And Jeff, to you and your team, we're happy to continue to assist you guys as well. So, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words and just thank you for your leadership the past week.
Okay, thank you, Megan.
Megan, I have a question real quick. Do you know of anyone taking clothes?
Currently, we're not aware of anyone taking clothes donations. We are actually at the state level working to try to mobilize Tide Loads of Hope. And so, we're getting there with Walmart Corporate, getting us a contact at Procter and Gamble. But our friends in Jackson and Washington and Calhoun counties are in desperate need of that resource. I know Bay is as well. So, we're working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank y'all very much.
Okay. Now's the opportunity for public comment concerning any agenda item. So, if anybody wishes to speak on an agenda item, now's the time. Is there any comment? Just to let everybody know, there's some that might not know how we normally work this. But if you have to leave early or whatever, that's just a time to talk about that agenda item. When it comes up, we also talk about it and allow public comment on that also. So, with that said, I see none. So, is there any items to be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. And our last legal list.
Yes, sir.
We had the earlier meeting that we just paid the EALs and also Waste Management. Do we need to segregate them out of this motion or not?
Uh, that's probably a good idea. So, we'll just clarify that the motion was to approve the consent agenda minus the EALs that were previously approved.
And Waste Management. Okay.
That was my motion.
That's your motion. Your second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Jones, I believe you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item up front here was the discussion I mentioned under the additions regarding the local state of emergency. At eleven thirty a.m. last Monday, this board voted to enact a local state of emergency, which allows us to do certain things in a more efficient and timely manner during an emergency. By statute, that only lasts for seven days, which would allow it to lapse at eleven thirty a.m. this morning. Statutes also allow the chairman of the board to extend a local state of emergency when he deems it fit, absent the meeting of the board. So, prior to eleven thirty this morning, the chairman did that. Extension to ensure that it did not lapse until we got here this afternoon to ask the board what your desire was. So, if you wish it to continue, you need to take no action. If you would rather it lapse and not continue, then a motion and second and a majority vote would do that. We would recommend that we leave it in place. We're not sure that we need it, but we would be much better positioned if we have it in place and don't need it than need it and not have it in place. It does us no harm to leave the standing for the next seven days. And if something happens in the meantime that we find that we need it longer than that, then we'll call the chairman to do similar thing next Monday. The venue will have me Tuesday to get some more input on it. So, our recommendation to you this afternoon would be to do nothing and allow the local state of emergency to stay in effect for another seven days.
I totally agree.
I do, too.
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Good. Next item on the agenda is, we had a discussion at the board table one or two meetings ago regarding the naming of the new park on Bay Grove Road and the new South Walton Sports Complex at Peach Creek. And the request was for each of you to provide input if you had any thoughts that you wanted considered in that naming process or names that you'd like to have considered. And so, we welcome whatever discussion may be there today.
Well, since it's in my district, I'll go ahead and lead the discussion on it. We heard a passionate plea from the granddaughter of Grady Brown. And what she has told me and probably all also, he used that park and that area around the park a lot during his lifetime. So, I'm going to ask the board, consider naming the park Grady Brown Park.
Okay, is that a motion?
I can't make a motion.
Oh, so you want to step down?
I can step down and make that as a motion. You don't need it.
He wants it.
He wants it. All right, that's my motion to name the park located at Bay Grove and US 331, the Grady Brown Park.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? Any discussion from the audience? What's the board's wishes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion to pass.
Do you relatives want to say anything? Do y'all want to say anything? Thank you for your persistence. And it just meant so much coming from a young lady like you. So, it's well worth it. Thank you.
All right. Special pass. Special move. Yeah, and as I've explained to the family is that when we get done out there, which will be sometime after the first of the year, hopefully before the summer, then we'll go ahead. We got our own signage put up and we'll make the appropriate signage for Mr. Brown. Okay? Thank you.
Megan, what about the other park?
Now, the other...
It's in your district, too?
It's in my district, too. I don't know what to name that thing.
Rick had a good idea. I was saying something like Walton County Regional Sports Complex, and you told me something that was better.
Walton County Sports Complex at Peach Creek?
Yeah.
Peach Creek Park.
What about Peach Creek Park? You know...
It's a little short, right?
We'll have to have a twenty-foot sign to put on around there.
Well, just a suggestion, why don't we table this and think about it more? Wait till the next meeting and give everybody a chance. Because, to be honest with you, with a storm coming in, I haven't even thought about it.
Is that all right with y'all? We'll just...
Just one week. Give him one week to think.
Yeah.
Well, next board meeting, which is next week.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'm agreeable to next week.
Next week.
Do you want to... Did you make that?
I'll make a motion. We postpone it till next week at the regular board meeting in Defuniac.
I'll second it.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number eighteen, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a request to award invitation bid eighteen days forty-four for the installation of the sports lighting at the new sports park, which they still don't have a name yet, to M Gaye Constructors in the amount of one hundred thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
We should call it the New Sports Complex?
It's worked for several years.
It's worked for two years now.
If you recall, we had to segregate out the installation portion of those lights. And this was the bid that came in and were to get installed.
I got a question for legal. Looking through the documents supplied on the bid bond. Not too fond of having it in the state of Iowa. If we have to take any action, we got to go to Iowa to do it. Is there any reason why it could not be done in Florida? Even though I think they're supposedly registered in the state of Florida, they are saying we got to go to... I think they say that we got to go to Iowa to do it.
If you'd like, if you have a question about it, whenever we take a break, if you talk to Glendale a little bit more, maybe find out.
Well, it may not be a problem. I just...
I honestly think that I haven't...
Glendale... Okay, let's come back to that. Glendale will get with you here in a few minutes on that. Okay, public work number nineteen.
Thanks, sir. The next item is a request to approve RFP zero-one-eight dash zero-four-zero to Piscoteau and Turnout Services and approve to re-advertise. We only have one responder and they were deemed non-responsive. So, I think they failed to submit a bid bond altogether. And so, we would ask that we reject that and re-advertise.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and second. Any public comment? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The next item is a request to award and approve and authorize the chair to sign contract zero-one-eight dash zero-three-nine for the Grady Ground Park Sea Wall renovation with RJ Gorman Marine Construction in the amount of six hundred thirty-seven thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-one cents. While that talks about sea wall, there's a number of things that go along with that. Boat grounds, stocks, beers, that type of thing. So, it's not just a head while they're building. But that's an integral part of this park. And with your approval, we'll move it on forward and get that part done.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Good motion and second. Any public comment? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Tousen.
Chairman and Commissioners, Brian Kellenberger. Appreciate your time. I'm going to have a few items of business and then Jay Tousen will get up and give his updates for our department. First item is a request to approve to award ITV zero-one-eight dash zero-four-three to the lowest reasonable responsible bidder, Backwood Bridges LLC. Authorize chairman to sign contract. This is for our Winston Lane neighborhood beach access. We were notified ninety days ago that this access had actually been built on the adjacent property, the tow that crosses there line. They've given us till December thirty-first to get it moved. So, we're asking that Backwood Bridges, the reasonable responsible bidder, will award the contract.
Board's wishes. Motion and second. Any public comment? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Next item is an update request for direction regarding the beach code revisions recommendations. Each year, we go through this process where we bring this beach-related code revision through different advisory committees. So, we went through the beach management committee, the destination program committee, a public workshop, postseason vending workshop, and then I presented to the TDC on October second. Regretfully, I made a few errors in my documentation that was used in the presentation. And that had to do with what the beach management committee had taken action on, on the different sections of the code that are being offered up for revision. There was also two items in there that the TDC tabled seeking some legal, you know, legal's response on it as to what could be done with that particular item. So, in light of that, we're asking direction on what we should do. I think it's prudent that we give the TDC an opportunity to relook at this information with the correct disposition from the beach management committee. I have sent out a corrective email or corrective documentation explaining my errors and then to this board, to the other boards or committees that were affected. So, what we're asking today is, what would you like for us to do? We have discussed with individual members of the TDC as if they could participate in a special meeting. We've not got complete word back if we will have a forum. If we do, I think we could schedule that as early as this Friday. Is that right, Sid?
Yeah.
If not, it would probably be sometime in the following week, which would then make it, the earliest time we could get back to this board would be on your November thirteenth meeting.
Well, I think we need to make sure the data that is being presented is correct.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate you stepping up to that and getting it back before the TDC council makes sure they're all on board with what was found and then bring it back to the board, even if it means wait till the fourteenth of November. A little bit longer than we normally like to do that. We like to be done with this in October, but we need to make sure we do it in the right way.
Okay.
Is that okay with the board?
That's what I think, too.
Okay, that's your direction.
Thanks, sir. Update on condition of the beaches and the bay accesses. As Mr. Jones explained earlier, we're very lucky. We've had our coastal engineer out on the beach. We've also done our own personal assessment. Beaches fared very well. We had no structural damage, any boardwalks on the beach, any of our neighborhood beach accesses or regional beach accesses. From what I saw and my own personal observation, not much destruction to any private boardwalks. There've been a few that suffered, but the beach itself lost some sand on the flat portion of it. Our engineer has submitted a preliminary assessment. And then, we also suggested that we take some action on doing a survey of the beach to obtain profiles. And I think at the same time, we ought to go ahead and do a main high water line survey and a region control line survey. The TDC actually added that during their code revision recommendation section that they are in favor of the BCC making that decision. So, the bay accesses, not so well. Pilchard Park is closed. It suffered some severe erosion on the west side and on the northwest corner. Some of the sidewalk got undermined. Some of the power meter base got knocked over and wires exposed. Some of the fishing piers on the west side got destroyed. And there's a large sailboat stuck on the rip raft there on the west side. Some of the barrier wall is also buried, it's like a timber barrier wall, got leaned over. Our engineer of record that designed the park has done a preliminary assessment, about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We're also inquiring with the FDOT as to who is actually responsible for that type of repair. We actually have a memorandum of understanding from maintenance of the park. And our preliminary investigation of that memorandum is that it doesn't include catastrophic damage. We're also working with emergency management to figure out what we can do as far as FEMA re-imbursement for the other parks. The other park that's closed is our Bay Ranchettes. That is there just to the east of Bay Drive, where it meets the bay. And it suffered some minor damage. The end of the pier, the guardrail got knocked off and a concrete approach to the pier got undermined. We don't have a preliminary estimate on that yet, but we're working on getting those. We have photographic documentation of all these issues. And we'll be working on getting some estimates after we figure out how to dovetail that with our purchasing processes.
Well, we need to try and, excuse me, figure out how we're going to pay for it and get it done as soon as we possibly can.
Yes, sir.
In preparation for the upcoming season.
Right.
Any questions for Brian?
Would you like to give us direction on getting prices from our coastal engineering firm for the beach surveys? I think we need to go ahead and do that.
Yeah, yeah, let's...
Do we need a motion for that?
I have a question. How... Okay, some of these people that consider the beach private, how are we going to survey?
Surveyors.
Stand down awards?
So, there's an exception. Surveyors aren't liable for trespass.
That's right.
Very good.
So, you're going to establish the ECL along with the main high water?
Yes, sir.
At the same time?
As well as take profiles. Typically, we take them on what's called the R monuments, which are spaced a thousand feet down the beach.
Okay.
And so, that will give us a good idea of volume of sand that we have currently in place. He also has recommended that we start seeking joint restoration permits from FDEP and US Army Corps of Engineers in the event that we do have a catastrophic hurricane event, that we're one step ahead of them. I think that might be for further discussion. I'd rather have Matt Trammell, our coastal engineering consultant, explain that to you in greater detail.
I think so.
He's explained it before. We've been kind of sitting on this since after the HSDR project got tabled. But I think it's a good idea that we do, if we're doing surveys, continue on with seeking permits or letting the board decide what they'd like to do.
Part of the contract for coastal engineering, so the new contract that we put out. So, we put out a new RFP to include what Brian just mentioned. Under legal's advisement, what he just mentioned was not in the original scope. So, that's why we put out a new one. So, we renewed our terror contract when it was up about two months ago. And so, we put out the new RFP and then actually that's being scored right now. So, we'll be bringing that back to the board probably in the next few weeks or so.
So, what you need to do, if you want to go ahead and start the survey work, I guess...
The survey work can start with a new contract.
Right. But I would prefer that we make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second. A motion and second. Any public comment? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I just wanted to give you a little update on a few things that we are working on post Hurricane Michael. So, you know, we really at the TDC are looking at ways that we can help our neighbors. And so, there's a few initiatives that we've come up with over the past few days as we're kind of getting back into the swing of things. And so, I'm really proud to say that we have partnered with Thirty A. And we came up with a campaign to sell T-shirts and donate the proceeds of those T-shirts for hurricane relief efforts. And in a matter of a day and a half, we have raised seventy thousand dollars so far. And the goal is a hundred thousand dollars, which we think we'll reach by tomorrow or Wednesday. So, this is what the shirt looks like. It says Shore Up. And this is not complete, but on the back we'll say Beach Strong with the B and the, from beach, and the strong in another color. And it's going to have our logo on one of the sleeves. So, it's a great way for us to promote our destination and how we're helping others in their hour of need. So, I'm really happy about this effort. Another effort that I kind of wanted to talk to the board and get some general direction on, if I could, is, it's not really in our marketing plan, but it's big. We're trying to coordinate a benefit concert in November. And so, we are talking to a concert promoter right now. It's the individual who does Songwriters Festival in January here in Walton County. And so, I am talking to some media outlets of how we can either stream this or perhaps even live broadcast it. And so, this is just now kind of coming to fruition. As we get more details, I'll certainly brief the board. But this could be a really great way for us to generate some serious funds. We could probably, you know, generate a million plus dollars in funds if this gets pulled off the way we're anticipating it. So, it could be really meaningful to our neighbors in their hour of need. So, we're looking at different ways that we can fund it. We have a few different options that aren't bed tax dollars within our budget. Not a lot, but about three hundred thousand dollars. So, those are the funds that we want to tap for this, so that way we kind of stay away from bed tax dollars. But I think it could be a great ROI, rather, for us helping our neighbors. We could get a great PR story out of it, obviously, for our assistance. But at the end of the day, just truly assisting our neighbors in their hour of need. One other thing that I'd like to add is, we're creating a website called Walton County Cares. And we're using this as a conduit of information. So, we are talking to emergency responders. We're talking to churches. We're in contact with our own PIO, with emergency management, and really getting together all the information that we can disseminate, pull it all together in one spot for Walton County, of how people can volunteer, how they can donate, what they can donate, the distribution channels of where they can donate items. So, we hope the law... So we hope to launch that tomorrow, if not tomorrow, certainly by Wednesday. So I just wanted to give you a few ideas of what we're working on right now. Yes, ma'am?
How much are the T-shirts? You can tell us.
The T-shirts are $30. They're being sold on 30a.com. We're not collecting the money, they are, and they're going to donate the money to the Sander Project. The Sander Project is a local 501(c)(3). It is owned by locals here. It is run by locals here, I should say. And so we want the money to really go where it's needed. And so they are buying supplies and they are already running supplies over there. So we anticipate having the money within their coffers by the end of the week. So I spoke with Sidney earlier about this today, just to make sure kind of everything that we were doing. I also spoke to William in the clerk's office over the weekend and I think the way we arranged this, everything is okay for the way we're doing this. So Sidney, I don't know if you kind of want to chime in a little bit on that?
Yeah, so just specifically Jay mentioned it, but we're not using TDT funds for this. There's some funds that the TDC has available that I guess are contributed by.
They, so we sell co-op advertising.
Right.
And so those co-op advertising dollars generate right now about $300,000 in funds in that account. And so the, these dollars for this initiative and also the concert that we're talking about would come out of that fund.
Right. So I, with William's blessing, I think it's worthwhile.
And like I said, I did speak to William over the weekend. Just before we got rolling with every other thing, I wanted to make sure it was all good. So just ways that we can help our neighbors in their hours of need. You know, I was in Louisiana with Katrina and I just, I know what it's like. I mean, I had friends who lost everything and so it's just, you need to try to help people in any way you possibly can.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Sid, you're up.
Yes, sir. Item number 23 is an update on the Highland House property. You guys should all have a copy of the survey and we're going to put it up on the screen. It's a little bit hard to see. Hopefully it's easier to see on the screen. Ah, it's like easier to see on the screen. And I apologize, it's because we've got the aerial photography. So the Highland House property is, it's Government Lot 62, which is this right here along 30A.
What the Highland House is.
Yes. So the question was whether or not we had access down to the beach through Government Lot 72. We own a portion of that Government Lot 72. You can see it is crosshatched, but there's a 15-foot area which is on a separate parcel of property that we had some concern about whether or not we have access. After researching it through the clerk's office and also, you know, Scott Rosenheim researched it as well, we would have access to the property that we own through that 15-foot strip of land through a remnant of a patent easement. So it is my opinion that we do have access across that 15-foot wide strip of property to get to the property that we do own. So, you know, hopefully that'll help you guys with your decision making. If you want to move forward and acquire this property, the step that we would need to take is to update the appraisals. The appraisals that we obtained in 2016 are out of date, we sort of have to update those. If you want to go forward, that would be what we would need to start.
I'll make a motion when we move forward with it.
Second.
Motion and second. I've got a comment or a question, Sid.
Sure.
If you come down just about a quarter of the way off the brick, off the beach, there's a house there.
Yes.
And I know these, these photographs sometimes are offline, but it looks like that house is encroached on that 15-foot coming down through there. Is that correct?
So, and I'm sorry.
No. Well, yeah. This, this right here, you see this crack?
Right. So it is hard to see. So that, where that house is located on Government Lot 72.
Right.
It, that portion of the easement was abandoned. And in exchange for that abandonment, so they could build their home, that, the property owner at the time, deeded us the property that's on the east side of Government Lot 72.
I got you.
Now, if you look at Government Lot 71, it does look like somebody encroached into it. That's another story and that it won't matter for, for these purposes, but.
Okay.
I have a question. To get to the property that we own on the beach, would we have to build like a little bridge or something to go over that?
Yeah, and that would be a question for the engineers. That is something that we'd have to take into account because there is a, I think it's a creek and a wetland that drains out. Now, we do, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, do we currently have a boardwalk there or is that a private? Okay.
Shell, shell.
Right. Right. So currently there's a boardwalk that you get to from the subdivision to the east, but it has a boardwalk down to the beach.
Right. And I assume it's probably not that deep. You could walk through it with your gear if you needed to without a bridge.
It's not that deep when I walked through it, but that's been a year ago or so, but, but, you know.
Okay. All right. That was all I had.
It's very, very small.
Okay. We had a motion and a second to move forward with the process. Is that?
Move forward with appraisals.
Right, appraisals, okay. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 24.
Commissioners, the next item is a request to approve contracts for the purchase of real property. These are for the Sheriff's Office for the fire, fire stations.
And these were properties that he was going to use his funds to purchase, correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 25, I'm going to, we deleted. I'll bring that back to you guys as soon as possible. Unfortunately, the Warners are in Panama City and with everything that's gone on with the storm.
Okay.
Have you personally heard from them?
Yes, I talked to Bill yesterday. So they're completely without power, telephone, anything. Bill and Tim both stayed in Panama City. They live in the East Andrews area and Bill had come over yesterday to get, get supplies and, you know, take them back to Panama City, but they're obviously going to be out of touch for, for a little while. And I, you know, told them I would help anyway because, you know, the Warners, they do a wonderful job representing us on a lot of different cases and a lot of other cities in the area, too. So hopefully they can get back up and running quickly.
Did they indicate whether or not their building is still standing or?
It is, but their office and their homes had some damage. It gives too much detail, but I mean, it's going to take a while to get all that repaired, I'm sure. So. The only other item, we had originally scheduled an Owners Association meeting for the Freeport Business Park to be held, you know, before the October 9th meeting, but that continued. So what I would request is that we reschedule that meeting for our October, is it October 25th? Is that?
23rd.
23rd. Oh, we reschedule it for October 23rd. We'll notice it for 9:00 AM or soon thereafter and hold it after the regular meeting if that's okay with you guys.
That works for me. How about you, John?
So moved.
And that'll give us time.
Any motion?
Yes, sir.
Second. A motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, that's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Commander.
Yes, sir. I received word that some vandals were pretty destructive to the Woodlawn Community Center. They had some basketball goals there and they tore them up pretty bad. I know that it's not a county-owned facility, but I would like to use, I don't know how damaged they are. I talked to Brad initially and like one basketball goal was like $2,000. Unfortunately, I don't have that much, but I do have about 900. And if I could use like 500 to, huh?
Six.
Six? Six, okay. If I could use six of that.
That's right.
Sorry, Greg. And rebuild those, I would appreciate it, you know. I'm leaving in 200, what more do you want there, you know?
Staff has done a little more research and 600 bucks will get us back.
Well, that's my motion, please.
Second.
A motion and second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's it.
I'm sorry there, Trey, you ain't going to have no money left. You're going to have to start selling some crabs. Okay, Commissioner Nipper's not present. Commissioner Jones, do you have anything?
No, not tonight.
Commissioner Anderson.
Just briefly, I'd like to thank everybody involved in the emergency operation center during the storm. Unfortunately, the public doesn't get to go out and see the fine job they all do, not only our staff, but the people from the other, the cities and the Sheriff's Department, the fire departments, the Chamber, Gulf Power and CHELCO. They have people out there 24/7 and they're all working hard. Our public works people are out there and Ms. Sarah has cooked for every one of them. But to watch this thing in action is something to be amazed and there to be applauded for the job. Jeff Goldberg has done a terrific job with our emergency management system and Jeff, I just want to personally thank you and your staff for the job y'all did. We were, we were a heartbeat away from being totally destroyed and to watch these guys work, knowing how important their job is and they never blinked. They just continued to do their job, no matter how tired they were, no matter how stressed out they were. And just being there watching them, I can tell you, I was super stressed out and thereby the grace of God goes us. And now our job is to help our fellow counties rebuild. So open your heart and open your pocketbooks and let's go to work to rebuild all of our, all of our counties in Northwest Florida.
I'd like to agree with you, Tony. We don't realize, okay, maybe somebody realizes that there are people somewhere doing something, but all those people in that EOC left families. They left their family not knowing what they were going to go back to. And that in itself is commendable that they walk away. But, you know, I, I will use any excuse to cook, so you know I was in Calhoun, you know. I was a happy camper, but it's my pleasure to keep those people comfortable.
Thank you. I'm going to just echo a few things that's already been brought up. Again, I want to give my personal thanks to our EOC personnel, Jeff and your staff, and also to all the ESF that are out there, that was out there in that room and there was probably an average of about 40, 45 people at any given time. It takes a lot of thinking about what needs to be done and trying to think ahead. And a lot of people don't have any ideas of the magnitude of the decisions that are made inside that bunker at any given time during these types of emergencies. I've gone through multiple big events, Hopeful was the last big one I had until this one here. I was fortunate, like Commissioner Commander said, two degrees to the west and we'd been sitting underneath this thing and it would have been just as bad here as it was over in Bay Gulf and Franklin Counties and Jackson County, too. I spent Saturday up there with my brother and outside Marianna trying to get the trees down. If you're in the lumber business, that's where you need to go because there's plenty of it laying on the ground that's going to have to be removed some way, somehow. But again, thank you to all the emergency personnel that were out there. It's a good thing you can sit there, watch them communicate with each other, try to keep each other informed so they can all make the right decision at the right time. Again, thank you all for doing that. Okay, at this time, is there any public comment? Can you talk about your dog, your cat, the hurricane, whatever you want to talk about? Seeing none?
Lee, more.
Who does? Oh, Lee, I didn't see your hand up back there.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Thank you, Ray. If you'd like to go to the back, just go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. This will be fast. I just wanted to thank you, President of the Scenic Corridor Foundation and representing that group and me and a whole lot of other people personally, wanted to thank you for the funding that you allocated previously for the mowing and upkeep of the medians on 98. It is making a huge difference and over time, it just keeps getting better and better. The grass out in those medians is getting healthier and healthier, so it, it's just a tremendous improvement and we and I really, really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. What did you say?
We've got to go back to item number 18. So that was the, the bond, sure, the sports light, sports lights. Yeah, so Heather had actually reviewed this before the meeting and I apologize for not having that information, but it looks like everything is signed with a bid volume.
Okay, so we can go ahead and take action on that.
Yes, sir.
All right, number 18 is a request to award ITB 01844 for installation of sports lighting at the new sports park to M. Gray Constructors Incorporated in the amount of $134,500, its board wishes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Let's see. Mac, I guess you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mac Purvis of the Plank Department. We have a request to approve resignation of zoning board of adjustment members, Bill Fletcher from District 1 and Phil Anderson from the at-large seat.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Resignations.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The second part of number 27, we request to appoint Jack Huggins Jr. to serve at the at-large position and Mr. David Henderson to serve as the District 1 appointee on the zoning board of adjustments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 28, the first of our legislative items tonight. We do have one request to continue if you'd like to go ahead and.
Just go ahead.
That, number 30, we have a request from the applicant to continue that item to the November 11. I'm sorry, November 13.
South Walton.
Yeah.
Number 13, Board of County Commissioners meeting. 4:00 PM in this room.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This brings us to item number 28, the first of our legislative item. I'm going to ask Kristen to come in and further explain this particular series of items.
Well, good afternoon. You guys authorized staff back quite a while ago to update the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan and we've been doing that, we've been working with the community quite a bit. The Inlet Beach Neighborhood Group had brought a set of amendments to us and then we also had some recommended amendments and we've kind of developed a new Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan because I'm sure you know there were numerous inconsistencies between what we had and it made it very hard to implement. There was a lot of uncertainty for the community as well as for staff. So we've had several public hearings, public meetings, neighborhood group meetings, and I want to be sure to tell you that Kelly Frymeyer on our staff has been the project manager for this project and she has done a fantastic job. She's an estate architect. She cannot be here tonight because she's under curfew. So she lives in Panama City. But this is her baby and she's done an amazing job. And then so tonight, we'd like to ask you if you would transmit, these don't have to to go through the state coordinated review process, but we still need to send them to the state for review. We've got a strike through of the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan, so we're removing that from the conference of plan and putting it into the Land Development Code. So, it'll be under the neighborhood planning process that's defined in our Land Development Code. And as you know, that has stricter requirements for notice for change. And then there's a couple of map amendments that we will need to change or send to the state, their future land use map amendments. You can see those in your packet.
It's board's wishes. Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Okay, the next item that we have on your agenda tonight are Land Development Code Amendments. We're going to request that we continue the first item there, which is Chapter Two, to the December eleventh meeting. The reason for this request is we need to get the transmitted future land use settlement back from the state agencies. And we don't think we'll have that back until December eleventh.
Okay, so it's not the November thirteenth, it's now the December eleventh?
Yeah, that happened at the last meeting and I think it needs to be December eleventh, just to be totally sure we get it back. I hate to do it again.
And that's strictly dealing with Chapter Two?
Yes, this is Chapter Two. There are a couple of map amendments that you have not seen that I do want to talk about here later. But just Chapter Two, that's right. The rest of these items, we would like to talk about, go through with.
Okay. Let's get this part of it out of the way.
Motion to continue to December the eleventh?
Chapter Two.
Chapter Two.
Second.
Got a motion?
Yeah, second motion.
Motion, second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. All right.
Okay. The next item, number two, under number two, sorry, I forgot that, is some Scrivener's revisions to Chapter Four, which you previously adopted, major revisions to Chapter Four. There's a couple of numbering issues and there was one percentage that needed to change related to lot size, shallow lot size, that was, is in the conference of plans. We want to make sure that the code says the same thing. And we are requesting that this be approved by ordinance.
Sid?
Yes, sir.
What's your thoughts?
I'm gonna have to make a comment here.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm relying on Kristen and the work she's done.
So, you won. What part? Created by ordinance?
Chapter Four.
Right. So, I think Kristen is going in order, if you look in the agenda item, aren't you going in order here with these numbers?
Yeah, it's two, sub-paragraph two.
Right. Sorry, I thought, but if you look, it's a request to consider an ordinance in the new Chapter Four.
Okay, I got it.
Probably should be two A.
Yeah. And Kristen, is this the first hearing or is this, it would be in a final adoption of that?
Well, it would be final adoption. We, the major revisions here, you've seen numerous times. And the comp plan revision, you already adopted. So, we need to make sure that the code reflects the adopted conference of plan.
Okay. What's board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Come forward, please. Please identify yourself to the clerk when you come up. Come on.
Hi, I'm not sure if I can comment or ask a question.
Well, you can comment and ask questions.
Okay.
And if I can't answer them, we got somebody that can.
Okay, sorry. It's just a little bit confusing as this is not my expertise or anything.
Would you identify yourself to the clerk?
Oh, I'm sorry, Carrie Schoaf and I am a resident of Inlet Beach.
Okay.
S-H-O-A-F. And just reading the amendment that, or the item number that we're on now, not really knowing any of that, I was just curious if anything contained in that particular item number, any of the changes affects the following item, number thirty?
Oh, we continue item number thirty to the November thirteenth meeting. So, nothing in item number twenty-nine would have an impact on that.
Okay.
Right, Matt and Kristen, that's correct, right?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Okay.
Okay, now, these are new for you, Chapter Six. This is gonna be section, subsection three, under two, Land Development Code Amendments. This is the first reading of proposed changes to Chapter Six, which deals with code enforcement. So, there are some substantive changes here and this is new, your first reading. It has been to the Planning Commission and has a recommendation of approval. No, I'm sorry, Chapter Six is signed, Scenic Corridor and Vista overlays. This got switched. Again, also, the same thing, new. We did incorporate some changes recommended by the DRB, the Design Review Board, into this and it's something that they have been working on for quite a while. And we just kind of lapped them and rolled it into here. Probably the most substantive change is the change dealing with lighting, parking lot lighting or lights and the color of those lights. And so, there's a change requiring that lighting be a certain Kelvin. Kelvin is a measurement of color. You know, we all look better in better lighting and so does landscaping and buildings. So, that was kind of the thinking there. It's, it would be an additional expense. So, that's something to be aware of.
That's, that's just in the Scenic Corridor.
Yes, just in the Scenic Corridor or overlays. Other than that, there's really just a lot of updating, dealing with materials to keep, kind of keep up with how those things change over time. We did some cleanup on thirty-eight, you know, dealing with the graphic that was in there that had kind of gotten shuffled to the back and we put that in there. Because we want to make sure that the thirty-eight corridor looks the way it was intended as we permit single-family homes. So, there is some clarifying language in there to make sure that, you know, we understand that you don't have to leave the whole twenty-foot buffer natural, whatever it is. If it's not a protected community, that area should be landscaped. So, that had kind of gotten, had an interpretation issue there. If you have any questions about that, please feel free to ask. Other than that, that is really it. We did update the plant chart.
Kristen, I have a question. Sorry. Did we remove that twenty-foot Scenic Corridor buffer from the comp plan?
We did not.
Okay.
But that language in the comp plan is, is very vague. So, I think this clarifies a little bit more, you know, what you could do in that buffer and what it means, what the intent is. And I think there's further room for that definition due to the vagueness of what's in the comp plan.
Wouldn't you want to go ahead and remove it from the comp plan, put it in the LDC? It'd be the cleaner way to do it?
We could, if that's your wish, absolutely.
Well, I thought we were, in our discussions over the last, whatever. We was trying to simplify this, I mean, get things out of the comp that makes it more difficult for, to enforce or to approve, so.
We could. We haven't adopted that chapter yet. So, if that's something you want to direct statute.
Well, that's just me. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks about it. More of this stuff we can put in.
Just something to keep in mind, that if you move it from the comp plan, Land Development Code, it becomes eligible for a variance.
Right.
If you want it, hammer down that this is gonna stay there, then, you know, the comp plan's not a bad place for it to be. So, just keep that in mind as you make the decision.
But we are, excuse me, Ms. Stone, but the way I kind of look at it is the property owner ought to have the ability to ask for a variance.
Then what you're suggesting would be the appropriate thing to do.
And if the VAB decides no, then it's no and they can go through the court system to find out. Now, that's just me on that. I don't want to...
No, I agree with you. I think that homeowners should have at least an opportunity to lobby for their calls.
Is that clear, I guess? Is mine?
Yes.
No problem. That is something that, I mean, thankfully, we haven't already adopted. That's in the future land use settlement. And yeah, I felt like it was gonna be controversial, so it didn't. But it may not be. We will certainly bring that back. That's gonna come back December eleventh.
Okay. Where are we at? What we need to do?
So, if you don't have any other, and I got way off track by, I'm sorry, we have a bumper, but, so if you have any other questions about Chapter Six, which is signs and Scenic corridors?
I don't.
This is the first reading. So, we'll bring that back for final approval.
Yeah, of course.
November. So, I guess, just a motion, just to have a clear, or motion to approve the first reading, or Kristen bring it back to the bumper.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. All right, next.
Okay, the next item is going to be code enforcement, which I talked about wrongly first.
Yeah.
Yeah, code enforcement. Yay, everybody's favorite. So, there are some substantive changes here. Code enforcement staff worked with me quite a bit and there were some things that they had asked for. And we made some clarifying changes here to help them hopefully better do their job. The changes, there's a, there's a summary in your packet and this is first reading too. So, you can have time to sort of read through this as you wish. But it does give them ability to issue fines. And these are for specific cases when they go out unless, say, somebody has clear cut or is in the process of clear cutting and, you know, they want some kind of immediate ability to get them to stop or...
Is this delineate between Central, North and South County?
No, the only delineation is that the action that they're taking has to be a serious threat to public health, safety or welfare, or it has to be a violation that is irreparable or irreversible in nature. So, they've got to be doing something really bad.
Define really bad. Somebody wanting to clear his land?
No, no, no. It would need to, well, maybe if you're clearing the coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone.
I understand the coastal Dune Lakes. I'm talking about the north end of the county.
Irreversible. In the north end of the county, you can clear your land without a permit.
All right.
So, there would be no code violation for clearing your land. In the south part of the county, there would be.
Okay.
So, you're right. I answered that wrong, yeah. It's five hundred dollars. So, it's not, you know, astronomical. The limit is at five hundred dollars.
The first time?
Yes, well, yes.
Well, it's capped at five hundred for everything. Because we're limited by states now.
Cannot exceed.
But each violation can result in a new fine.
So, if you take one tree down, you ain't supposed to do this, five hundred dollars. And if you take one down the next day, it's another fine.
Yes. So, you might want to take them down all at once.
Take them down at once?
Shame on you.
Send us a call.
At least we have trees to worry about, right?
Okay.
Then also, it, there's some relocation of stuff. The development or inspection process was removed from Chapter Seven and put into Chapter One where it needs to be. The other major change is related to property, safety and maintenance. So, as I explained to the Planning Commission, there's a couple ways we could go with this. And, and, and one way is that we can have some simple language in the code that deals with better enforcement of junk, litter, vegetative overgrowth and dilapidated structures. So, we could have this kind of simple language that deals with the exterior of the home and really doesn't get us into landlord-tenant relationships and substandard structures and the like. The other way that we can deal with this is to reference the International Property Maintenance Code, which I feel personally, and I've had this discussion a lot, that, you know, that that would get us into more of a role where we deal with the interior of the structure. Current staff and, and what we have now, probably, I did work in a scenario like that in another place. And the issue, you really get into a lot of landlord-tenant, you know, my plumbing's not good, because it, it basically makes them keep the property up to building code standards. And also, there is some language in the International Property Code Maintenance, or Property Code Book, that may be inconsistent with some of our grandfathering language. The Planning Commission recommended that we go with the International Property Maintenance Code. So...
Basically, then, if that was implemented, is giving code the, the authority to go in and do an inspection inside a house?
No.
Ah, okay, then why do we need to worry about the inside?
They would only be able to go in if they had owner's permission.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
If you're doing inspection, how many owners are gonna actually say, I'll go in there and tear me up?
If it's the tenant and they want us to go after the landlord, they will say, yes, come on in. And that's just a decision of whether or not you want to get into that. It's...
Well, that's staff. It's gonna have to have additional staffing to do that.
I, I would say so, yes.
It, it also gets into, I just don't see this flying, especially in the north end. Don't see it flying in the south end. I don't want somebody coming in my house and checking my plumbing. I mean, that's my job to keep my plumbing straight. I'm not really comfortable with that part of it, I'll be honest with you. I, I think that's a step too far. That's a little far reach from, from my thinking. So, I'm not in favor of that, to be honest.
Let me wait Devil's Ass kick it for a minute. I'm renting a house from you and plumbing breaks the, you know, there's water going everywhere and you won't come fix it. What recourse do I have as a tenant?
Move out.
On the landlord tenant, you take him to court.
Okay.
And of course, we can order him to fix whatever.
And, and I understand that there's landlords that would do that. I'm not saying that. But it also is, is going to, I think, overstep with the private property owner or could, could be. Because you could, I mean, you could get somebody there that really doesn't think about it and say, hey, we want to come in, search your house. And, you know, they're not really up to date on what's going on. And they say, sure. And then, you know, you go in there. I mean, I want, I want good, safe homes. And God knows, if anything showed us, it's, this hurricane showed us that we need, we need good, safe homes. But still, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with that, that policy. The outside stuff, I understand.
Okay.
I, I really do. But I'm just a little bit uncomfortable. I think it's a step too far.
There, there is some language in there dealing with the outside stuff. You know, if you have a bunch of junk or trash or, you know, that's really a nuisance to the people around you or your, you know, vegetation's too high, that they can go out and address that based on complaint from neighbors. You can leave that language there.
That's the most complaints I think I get, especially in, around the Chalkdale area, is that people like abandon trailers and then you've got rats and all this kind of stuff. And then, you know, the brush grows up. That, that's for most of lack of plants coming around.
That's huge.
So, Kristen, this is a first reading?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, if you guys wanted to give Kristen direction on how to move forward, so, I think the consensus is that to remove any reference to the interior and to just have the standard that would address the exterior of the, of the home.
I believe that's what we...
... structures.
All right, we need that form of motion.
Second.
A motion and a second.
Yes, yes.
Okay, any public comment? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mark, you're sitting there grinning like a Cheshire cat.
He's enjoying being on that side, I can tell you how he's grinning.
I noticed that the private practice, he gets haircuts now.
Okay, go ahead.
The last Land Development Code item is Chapter Eight, dealing with the Neighborhood Planning Program. It's a new Chapter Eight. It's a new Chapter Eight. Um, we did, we, we just made some, well, we actually, one change is kinda big and you guys, you may not, you may not like it, but one, one, uh, get some feedback. One, um, change is that we require the publication of any new neighborhood plan on the county's website, kinda like we've been doing with Inlet Beach. We've got a separate place where we put it on our website. So that that information, we've kinda updated for the electronic age. Um, but the other, um, major change that we added is that if someone does, uh, desire to do a neighborhood plan and they wanna bring that forward through the process, that that be either, uh, managed by a planning professional or they ask planning staff to, to help, uh, with that process. Because kind of the, um, organic plans that we have now are very difficult to implement. So we would like to have some professionalization of the content that we adopt into our code or that we bring forward to you.
That makes sense. Okay. So, uh.
Is this a, this is a first reading?
Yes, this is the final one here for first reading.
Just a motion to approve the first reading.
All right.
Some of.
Yes, motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Is that all you got?
No.
No, of course not.
Uh, the, the next item we're moving on to, um, is the, uh, actual changes to the official zoning map. As we started going through this process, we realized that, um, our current future land use map, which is the new zoning map, had some really major things that needed to be updated. Um, one is the Nocuzzi land holdings. They ask us to go ahead and make those changes and they, you can see in the map there, they have huge, huge thousands of acres of land that will go to conservation, uh, if you approve that request. And then the Coffeen Preserve, that too, was shown as residential, so we're asking to show that as conservation. That was something that came out of the, uh, study that Melinda did that was dealing with the water quality in the lakes, that they had identified that. Uh, there's another change that was requested, uh, for, um, some property on County Highway ten eighty-seven, north of Highway ninety, from rural village to heavy industrial. That is a site that has an existing, um, junkyard, car, or some, something.
Does it need to be heavy industrial?
Under the new zoning, it does. Because that, let, use is listed in as heavy, uh, just because of the impacts to surrounding property owners of something with that much outdoor storage, uh, derelict vehicles and that type of thing.
If we didn't make this change, there would be grandfathered.
Well, he's having a problem with his insurance is the whole thing that, uh, you know, and I've talked to him. He's having a problem with his insurance. Uh, and it is, you know, a lot of, you know, old vehicles.
Yeah, it's a junkyard.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there gonna be any requirement that he have to screen from the public roads? Uh, he's doing it there to some degree, but.
He's grandfathered, so not really. We won't be going back in there. And we could ask him to do that since we're being so gracious and considering this amendment. I think that would be a good ask and I.
Well, I don't have to ask. I think you ought to be required to. But if he, fence falls down, breaks down, or whatever, will he be required to put it back up?
Yeah, yeah.
Very well.
And this is not allow him to expand beyond the existing footprint, right?
Okay.
If somebody came on and knocked his stuff out of the building line.
Um, the final change is, uh, we're at, requesting is there, the court ordered overlay areas, which are Saint Joe properties. The, the actual court order document specifies what land use categories those were supposed to be. But somehow, in our translation, we called it court ordered overlay on the flume. And now with the change to zoning and also as they're built out properties predominantly, they need, uh, redevelopment ability under some sort of framework. And we're trying to follow what that court order overlay, uh, required us to do there.
Okay. All right, does that cover everything under that request?
Yes, along with the Inlet Beach map changes, those are also gonna have to be zoning map changes. So you have those in your packet too and, and those will come, all of this will come back. And I want, these map amendments are new, so I wanted to make sure they got pointed out to you.
Okay.
So this would be a request to transmit this to the, right, Kristen, or?
Um, we will be, we, we already approved to transmit the flume amendments. We will not need to transmit the zoning map amendments. Um, but we did need to have a public hearing on those, cause we need to have three here. It's kinda weird, cause we don't have a zoning map now, but I felt like we needed to tell everybody what we're doing.
But we need a motion to. Will we have an additional hearing on this or is it?
It'll come, it'll be adopted in Chapter Two with the new zoning map. But since these map amendments are new, I felt like it needed to get on everybody's agenda a couple of times.
So just a request to approve?
Move forward with putting this in Chapter Two, basically.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, Mark, can you look, pause it?
Well, and sorry, I'm, sorry, I'm late. I, I called in traffic on my.
Imagine that.
I'm just making sure. I, I, it's literally hard this morning. My, a client got me a letter concerning a land use change request, not by the staff, but by a homeowner in Inlet Beach that would be part of the Planning Commission meeting that was moved to tomorrow night. And I've noticed on today's agenda, none of that is included in any of the transmittals being done today, Allison.
And you're talking about the piece of land that's next to, um, Inlet. Bailey property and not included?
Okay, no, I think it's next to, um, uh, Serenby Inlet, uh, I, I.
That's the Bay area, yeah. Yeah, because
Right, right.
We sent out notices to all those rental property owners because that was a request they got added right in the process. And we are waiting to back them down and I know that you got scattered and so that's gonna add a wrinkle. So far, we have not heard anything from anybody in objection.
You, you're going to have one, I just, we got this, you know, and so.
It's gonna come back.
It's not.
Separate from this, yeah.
Mark, could you please say your name?
Mark Dennis. Thank you, that's one.
They take care of it, Mark Dennis. All right, I think we had a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. I see one more thing on here.
Yeah, I'm not gonna lie, that kinda scared me. Okay, um, Chapter Six is, uh, this is gonna be the first reading, uh, to strike it entirely. It's our accessory structures. It's not going away, but it's, it's moving to Chapter Two and Chapter Five. But it's a, a strike through that needs to be in the ordinance.
What's Board's wishes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second.
This is a first reading, so we'll bring that out.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Much done, John.
Is it motion? Anybody else? That it?